Are we ready?
Mike, are we ready, Rush?
Okay. Good evening. It is 6:10. We're sorry that we're late from closed session. It's October 14th, 2021. LBSD's open sessions called order. Which one of you would like to lead us in the pledge this evening? Okay, awesome. Thanks Natalie.
Ready, one, two, three. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Natalie for leading us. There's no report out of closed session. This moves us to 4D. Mr. Dixon, are there any changes to the agenda?
No changes.
Okay, thank you. Fellow board members, can I have a motion and a second to adopt tonight's agenda? So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Victoria, can you please conduct a board member roll call vote, starting with the students?
Isabella?
Present.
We're voting to adopt the agenda. That's okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Perry? Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Normandin?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. With that, we're moving on to item 5A. LBSD Public Comment Forum closed today at noon with one comment that all the board members have received. In addition to that, noted on the agenda, you'll see an opportunity for live public comment for non-agenda public, for live public comment for non-agenda. For each information and action item, public hearings all provide the opportunity for the public to testify. Public comments tonight will be accepted by those attending in person who wish to speak. Public comment speaker cards are located in the, by the front doors. And please turn them into Dr. Shelley, I'm gonna mess up your last name. Sorry. Who will bring them to Miss Weber? Just wave her hand. On the front, fill out the agenda item or items you'd like to speak to, and if you prefer not to provide a name, make sure you provide a unique identifier that the clerk can say to call you the podium. When you're called, you'll come up to the podium. And sorry, if you like, you can state your name and your connection to the district. When you begin your testimony, you'll start, we'll start the timer. You have a maximum of three minutes. Our preference is that you hand a card in before session begins, but we know sometimes people hear something they want to speak. So just get a card and make sure it gets to Miss Weber, and we'll do our best to get you in there as long as there's still someone speaking. So we'll close public comment when the speaker of the last card has spoken or 20 minutes, whichever comes first. At 20 minutes, the board can vote and/or extend the time for public comment on the current item. If you do not want to speak in public or use the written form, or you have additional thoughts after you hear about an item, you may share them in writing to all the board members. We appreciate and read all the input we receive. Under the open meetings law that requires professional and transparent meetings, no board member can communicate with the majority of the board unless seated in a board meeting. We value all input and only speak with each other after we've heard from all stakeholders, which includes our experts through presentations and information, includes all of our stakeholder input via email and public comment. We appreciate all the work and time to share all the input we receive before we take action. The open meeting laws also task us to listen without affirmation, which is the hardest part when the students are talking to us. With public speaking, listening to public comment without affirmation also applies to the audience. So the meeting of the board is, in public remains professional. Thus, we must refrain from reacting to speakers' comments. With that, Clerk Osborne, have you received speaker cards for those wishing to make comment on non-agenda items?
Yes. I'd like to first call up to the podium Leonard Olds for public comment, followed by Brent Babcock.
Are we ready? Very good. I'd like to mention today that according to ballot media in 2021, there had been 80 school board recall efforts against 207 seated school board members. Merrick Garland, the head of the Department of Justice, has called for protection of board members, never mentioning once parents and students and their rights. I'd like to talk about three school board recalls here in California. The first one in San Francisco. Three of the members have been recalled, and I wanted to give you the rationale. They said they wanted a quality education, not 44 schools renamed for some ideology that they didn't believe in. One person said they were being recalled because they were Latina, racist, sexist, and ageist. The last one, I don't understand. One person said they were recalled because they were a Pacific Islander. What that has to do with education, I have no idea. The only reason the four others were not being recalled in San Francisco was they hadn't served long enough. The next one is Tustin Unified School District. Three out of the five board members are under recall. The rationale, unresponsive to questions about curriculum, declining academic performance, use of critical race theory words and books, and praise Antifa in a public vein. The third one is the Los Alameda School District. Three of their board members are up for recall in the November 22 ballot next year. In part, the reasons. Approval of social justice education on intolerance, hiring of staff to support mental health without definition, and social justice standards. In all of these, what the parents have said was, "Your job is to educate. Your job is not to influence the social adjustment of children or students." Our federal government has chosen not to concentrate on those parents and students, but rather on board members. Whether these are dissonant or not, the theme through all of these three recalls in California are the use of critical race theory, the implementation of social justice standards on students and parents, which are not called for by the communities. This is true across the United States, in every city. If you watch television, you know exactly what's going on all around the country. It is not just a local movement. It's a national movement, and with good reason for all of them. Something to think clearly about, listening to your constituents.
Thank you for your testimony.
The next speaker.
Please refrain from clapping. Thank you.
Brent Babcock, thank you. And he'll be followed by Rod Teepel at the podium.
Good evening. My name is Brent Babcock. My wife and I are Laguna Beach residents for 18-plus years. We have two sons. They went to Laguna Press School, preschools. At two and a half years old, they've been through Top of the World. One of them now is at high school as junior on the cross-country team. The other is here at Thurston, an eighth grader. Both are A students. At the outset, we are not anti-vaxers. We're not conspiracy theorists. We all had our normal childhood vaccines, and we've had our occasional flu shots. We had no issues with giving both of our sons a full complement of the childhood vaccines. We're well-informed and we're educated. I'm a patent attorney, two science degrees from UCLA, two professional degrees from Georgetown. We are very concerned about the announced vax mandate for all schoolchildren. We urge you to make this very important decision in this regard very thoughtfully, based on a rational analysis of the facts and the actual science as published in the peer-reviewed medical journals, not the media and not the political hype. We simply ask that you rely upon your reasoning, your intellect, and not upon emotion, fear, or blind submission to un-American edicts from tyrants in DC, in Sacramento, Santa Ana, or elsewhere. In all of our lives as Americans, we make decisions for ourselves and our families based upon a very simple and fundamental risk-benefit analysis. We are truly dismayed that nearly all of our politicians, public health officials, and media sources are not only ignoring this basic risk-benefit analysis, but they are very publicly even proudly censoring all discussion of that analysis. That is not American, and it's not science. And considering the recently announced vax mandate, we ask that you conduct that basic risk-benefit analysis. In that context, we note, what are the risks to our kids? With COVID, essentially zero. Children under 18 have a 99.997% survival rate. The few kids who have died all had underlying conditions. What are the risks of the experimental shots? Far greater than zero, even for the short-term effects. Myocarditis, pericarditis, to name two, especially prevalent in boys, have become so problematic that the FDA and CDC now require black box warnings about those very dangerous side effects. The damage to the heart, the damage to that tissue is permanent. There's no such thing as mild heart damage.
That's time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Babcock. Rod, Rod Teepel, you're invited to the podium, and you'll be followed by Joanna Diver.
Jan Vickers, with all due respect, your response to my request regarding a board roll call vote to terminate funding of education elements was dismissive, referring me to the vote taken nearly four months ago. My request was and is that based upon the current information and clear opposition in the community and nationally, that the board immediately vote on the motion to terminate the EE contract, which we expect after these remarks. President Normandine, I'm still waiting on the response from your lawyers regarding my request that so long as you are funding education elements, the topic of critical race theory be included in the formal board agenda. Further, I want to address your comments on your email of September 26th, in which you said, quote, "Just to be abundantly clear, I agree with you that isms exist and have no place in our society. Education elements was not hired to create a curriculum, and LBUSD does not and has not and has no plans to teach critical race theory," unquote. So I presume by your comments that among the isms you are not opposed to are the foundational principles of the country, including individualism, capitalism, and patriotism. I take it that you agree with my stated indictments, not only of racism, but also of Marxism, Leninism, Maoism, and related critical race theory. If that is your view, you're among the majority. A recent YouGov America poll found that most Americans familiar with critical race theory, 58%, have a negative opinion of it, while 55% said it's bad to teach in schools. So that said, you say EE is not CRT, and is creating, and it's creating, and it's not creating curriculum for Laguna. So then, what is this? This is an EE presentation to LBUSD entitled, "Schools Grow When People Grow." Such a nice title, don't you think? Quoting directly from the source, quote, "Discovering and owning our privilege, equity as the Holy Grail, white fragility by Robin DiAngelo." Robin DiAngelo, calling out sources, one of the leaders of the CRT movement by name quoted in the document, "To challenge, no challenge to white definitions and structures, prototypes that create equitable outcomes for all students." And the examples of white shaming in the literature go on and on and on. The simple fact, you plan to implement a racist, notionally anti-racist curriculum like now. Public white shaming right out of Mao's Cultural Revolution, listen to Shivaun Fleet from Virginia, her public comments. She was there and sees the same tactics today in America.
That's time.
Thank you, Mr. Teepel. The next, the next speaker is Joanna Diver.
I move to terminate the education elements, the contract immediately. Do I have a second? We have a second, we have a third, we have a fourth, we have a fifth, we have a sixth. Let the record show. We call for the roll call vote now.
Thank you, Mr. Teepel. Mrs. Diver, you may come and approach the podium for your public comment. Thank you very much. You even had it on there. I'm sorry. I got distracted. But let me just inform the person next, if you don't mind. The next speaker will be Chala, Mr. and Mrs. Chala. Think, how do we, how do you say your last name? Chala. Okay, thank you. You're next. Go ahead, Joanna.
Okay, is my time start? Okay. Hi, my name is Joanna, Joanna Diver. For those of you who don't know me, I'll put it down. Okay, sorry. I'm not used to speaking in the mask and a microphone. Okay. Interestingly, I can write a good email, but speaking in front of a group like this makes me crazy nervous, but here I am, which tells you exactly how extremely important this is to me. We've complied with the trimester in remote learning for a year, which was mostly a passing of time. We gave you grace for your efforts. We've complied with the mask mandate, even though I don't agree with it or believe it's effective, but really wanted my kids back in the classroom, learning and socializing, and they wanted to be. We've complied with testing at times for COVID, which I believe is unnecessary, especially for asymptomatic people, but we will not comply with the COVID vaccine mandate for our children in K through 12. We will, even if you grant us a religious belief exemption, we do not trust that when California lawmakers reconvene in January, that they will honor this indefinitely. We are not fearful. For two months now, we have been in school with no surges, no super spreaders, and most importantly, no resulting deaths. And we also have our therapeutics, pre-treatments, and faithful doctors who are honoring their Hippocratic oath, who will help us recover should we need it. My daughter also has natural immunity, which is far better than any man-made vaccine. We are not afraid. God gave us this robust immunity, this miracle inside our bodies, and my kids will not be a shield for any adult. I will be their shield and their protector. Thankfully, their grandparents are not asking them to be vaccinated, and they've all had COVID, even in their vulnerable age. They are not afraid. Lawsuits will be coming if you mandate this in our district. Maybe our board could follow the shining example of other Orange County school boards who are already preparing to sue the governor over this proposed vaccine mandate for K through 12. We will not allow the federal or state government to dictate to us what is best for our children's health. LBSD's job is to educate our kids, not be their physician. We will not fear. It is a false and deceitful grace that says, "Do it for your neighbor." Jesus gave us free will to choose Him, as well as choose what we put in our bodies, not from an aborted child of God, which is the truth that has recently been unveiled. He never, ever coerces us. We will not fear. 365 times in the Bible, God says, "Do not fear," and I choose that to trust in and believe in. Thank you.
You're out of order. This isn't a town hall. It's a meeting of the board in public. We can have this meeting with just the press. Please do not do that again. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanna. The next speaker.
I can't speak with this. So I'm echoing the sentiments that have been said. The mask on, it's, I wish we can stop, you know, letting fear rule us anyways. This is totally unscientific, though. I want to say, did you know that there are health sciences that reverse diabetes, hypertension, hypothyroidism, and many other conditions? Why am I saying this? Because the same health sciences, and these are as old as humanity itself, have very doable, practical, and effective techniques to keep our immunity robust in shipshape and help us recover, if it takes a hit for whatever reason, like Mom just said. Not one voice has been raised to ask why our immune systems are so compromised today. Because no one wants to address the toxicity that we have ourselves created in our environment. We teach our children about it in environmental science, but what are we doing? We are shying away from removing that same toxicity with the same vengeance we are displaying and promoting an incorrect, ineffective solution, unproven shots, when it does not stop infection, transmission, or reduce viral loads. When 99.98% children recover from this flu-like illness, when there are sciences that can help us recover from serious life-threatening diseases, there is no justification, no good reason to make our children experimental guinea pigs. I wouldn't even experiment on guinea pigs. We don't need that science. There are 3,000-year-plus old sciences that reverse diseases without going through this experimental guinea pigs. We have to stop this unscientific solution, or we have to stop pretending we uphold freedom, equality, liberty, or even teach art or science in our schools. And I would love, I'm not even from the school district, by the way. I'm here to connect with like-minded people. I'm, I come from a neighboring city, and, you know, if you want to ever connect with us, it's like, we can share emails and we can, we can promote. And we're going to have a school, there's another district meeting going on right now. We have friends there now. There's more districts, you know, school board meetings coming up. We need to group together because that's how we can fight, and there is many of us to do this. Thank you for your time.
Please stop doing that. We've asked politely. It's the law. Please don't clap again.
Thank you. That was my last public speaker card.
Thank you to all the speakers. Thank you, Clerk Osborne. This moves us to six reports, and it's the student board members. You guys are first. It's always such a pleasure to have you here. Which one of you would like to start?
Okay, so I was reporting on Top of the World and El Moro. Well, Natalie's going to be doing the high school and Thurston. So there wasn't too much to report from the elementary schools, except recently they just held goal-setting conferences for each of the schools. Last Friday, Top of the World had a very successful back-to-school bonanza, so they do every year, and they had a record number of participants, which I guess just kind of showed community solidarity after COVID. And El Moro will be hosting the Boo Blast later this month for the community. And next week, they're going to be having their Character Counts Week, and the staff will all wear orange for District Unity Against Bullying Day.
Hello, and I'll be reporting on Laguna, the high school in Thurston. So at OBEHS currently, on the high school admin type front, we have began conversations about the 2022 and 2023 bell schedule with staff, and the next step will be seeking input from the students. We had around 50 to 60 clubs this year, which is a huge success, and many students are now involved with those various clubs. That happened a few weeks ago at Club Rush. Staff and student body are looking forward to the homecoming. That includes dress-up, dress-up days, big football game, pep assembly, and the dance next Saturday. Parents' sports booster organization is going to hold a homecoming tailgate party October 22nd in the district lot, which is something new we've never done before. We are looking forward to sports swap down the road in November. It's a great opportunity to support both Thurston and the high school by donating old gear and sporting items. Students are involved in participating in the school spirit activities, and we've already doubled Hoco's ticket sales this year already compared to two years ago, and the college fair was hosted by the College and Career Center yesterday night. At Thurston, we have Thurston started lunchtime yoga for all sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students. This will occur in the amphitheater Thursday through Friday. They will, they're going into their second week of offering homework club and after-school space for students to study, work on assignments, and get support. Tomorrow, teachers will be meeting within the collaborative support team to review students' data, iReady assessment results, grades, attendance, and share strategies and recommend supports to ensure students are experiencing success. And also, lastly, there's some, Thurston held their first lunchtime student store, where students cash, cash and points they've earned for school swag, donated lunches, and school-related items. Students received points through the positive, through positive reinforcement system to encourage and reward students for doing the right thing. And that's all we have.
Thank you. And how many clubs did you say?
We had around 50 to 60. We had a big turnout. I don't have the exact number, but it was, there was a lot, and so many kids are in them and super happy.
That's great. Thank you. Sorry. That moves us to B for the bargaining units. And Margaret, if you can talk to us about CS, CSEA. Thanks.
Yes, good evening. First, you know, you come to the meetings and you're thinking, "Okay, I want to tell you everything that's happened," and you realize that things happen every moment, so I can't tell you everything. But the one thing that has happened is Mr. Collin and his team have been working very collaboratively with CSEA on expanding opportunities for our members, and some of that you have seen. That alone is really representative of where the district is and the relationship that classified staff has with the district. And I think that's very important, that that always be acknowledged, even in the times, you know, that the best of times, the worst of times, even when there's some people that are not totally on board. We talk and talk it through, and we get to a place where it's common ground. So I've been making site visits with Emma Lopez, our labor rep, and we've had two so far, and they've been interesting and enlightening, and the opportunities that we have for classified employees, as she sees, are really a lot different than in other school districts, and so we have to be thankful for that. There's, as I said, so many things happening between the intervention, new programs, the MTSS programs, and our lead IA positions. There's so much just due to Ms. White that are happening that it's really exciting. So I'd like to leave you with the feeling of there's a lot of positive happening.
Thank you for that. And Sarah, representing Labuca, could you give us your report?
Week of minimum days that they're wrapping up and have had the opportunity to meet with each of their students' parents for their fall goal-setting conferences. And secondary teachers had three minimum days in which they were able to have time to have their robust discussions about multi-tiered systems of support, and teachers are really interested. The thing that came out of most of these discussions is they're really interested in trying to carve out the time and use these different periods we've created to support their students, to give them some extra help, and also to connect with them emotionally. So those are the two real goals that came out of that, that they really want to focus on, as we kind of keep sort of defining and, you know, are, what we want to do with some of those, that advisory and tutorial period, et cetera. And also, along with that, teachers have positively received the professional development on the iReady program. So, you know, which is a program that provides teachers with the ability to prescriptively support their students' academics where they're at, whether, you know, they need to excel, or they need extra help, or somewhere in between. And, and I think there's just so much more to that program, and, you know, so we're in the midst of using that and learning more about it and what it can generate and as a great tool for support for our students.
Thank you so much. And this will move us to 6C, which is our school resource officer. I was looking for Fred. Thank you. Thank you, Ashley.
Everyone, I'll keep it short and sweet, since our student representatives covered pretty much everything I want to cover. Just want to remind everyone that we're going to be present at all of these school activities that are coming up in October. It's a very, very busy month for all of us. At the homecoming game, just a reminder for all parents, if your student is not a high school student, please make sure you stay with your, your student, your child, the entire time. We don't need to have everyone running around, so please help us out. It's a team effort with that. Also, with the e-bikes, just want to thank everyone for, for helping us out with that. It's a community effort, and we are doing our best with all the education, so we really appreciate your patience and help with that. And then also, since we have Halloween coming up, wanted to remind everyone, parents, please inspect the candy. Take a picture of your kiddo before they go out trick-or-treating that night. So God forbid anything hap- Take a picture of your kiddo before they go out trick or treating that night. So God forbid anything happens, we do have an up to date picture. But other than that, we're having a blast. It's been a great couple of months in school and we're looking forward to all the festivities that are planned for us.
Thank you so much. And since Dr. Gloria is not here this evening, we're going to move on to the cabinet. So Mr. Collin, let's start with you. Actually, sorry, Mr. Dixon, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Yes, Dr. Gloria is ill tonight, not feeling well, but we do have the rest of the team here, Dr. Mayberry, Mr. Collin, myself, and most importantly, Victoria. So if there's any feedback or questions that we need to take back to them, we'll be sure to note that and make sure it gets back to them so we can respond appropriately. One thing that came up at our joint meeting with the city of Laguna Beach was the new on-demand trolley system. We had a meeting with the city of Laguna Beach this week and it did come up in our discussion. So I just wanted to give a general reminder to the board and the community that that is going to start soon. In fact, it's going to go be Monday through Friday, extending eight AM to six PM. On Fridays, it'll go to 10 PM. And it begins on October 18th. And what for us specifically is we were talking to the city, they did say this new on-demand service will have stops at LBHS Thurston and near Top of World Elementary. So it's something to look out for. And then we talked about it in our joint meeting, but they're starting it soon and through our partnership, that's something that came up. I wanted to be sure to brought it up here. Another thing with our, with the business office right now, as you know, we're in the midst of preparing and finalizing our first interim report. That report will be of all the financial data through the end of October. So we're doing all the tweaks in it now, ready for the November board meeting. But not a lot of changes other than adjustments make it to the budget, the actuals that we're seeing. But it's something that our staff has been working through and it is busy, but again, it's, it's good to be back and we're looking forward to Halloween and really appreciate those tips, Officer Coating on the Halloween safety. That's, that's great for everybody. Thank you. That's it for me.
And what were the three schools? I got OBHS.
Yes, and, and this will be, I believe in their newsletter, the community newsletter this afternoon that went out, but it, it for us, it said stops at Laguna Beach High School, Thurston and near Top of World Elementary School.
Floor is yours, Mr. Collin.
Thank you, President Normand. I want to begin by just sharing my appreciation for the relationship and collaboration with both unions leadership. We have been meeting quite a bit the last few months between all of the mandates and dealing with just the beginning of school. So thank you so much for all your collaboration. And you'll see this evening, we do have the MOUs for the additional one-time compensation that we agreed in the spring at the table to come back and discuss a potential one-time off-schedule compensation for, because of additional carryover, carryover of funds that we were expecting. And again, of course, in, with the governor's mandate of all staff being either vaccinated or, or file for exemption, we're with that deadline being October 15th. We are, we are in place where everyone has, has either filed for the exemption, the process of filing, or, or have shared their vaccination status. And weekly testing is happening for all those individuals and that would include all full, part-time employees, contracted employees, subs and walk-on coaches. So we've got that in full swing. And then we continue to actively recruit as, as I shared previously, there's, it's quite a substitute teacher shortage going on right now. So we continue to actively recruit. And I appreciate you'll see the ratification of the contract with Strategic Kids on the, on the consent calendar this evening. We contracted with them. They're providing us with four classified subs, one for each school site, which is helping us to just have an extra body on campus for those, the, the classified positions we're finding are even harder to fill than the certificated. They get paid a little bit less and it's, so it's just, it's really going to be a benefit for us just to ease and ensure that, you know, all of our vacancies do are covered by a qualified individual. So that's everything for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Collin. Dr. Mayberry.
Good evening. Thank you. Yeah, I was actually going to talk a little bit about goal setting conferences and the PD going down this week at the Mullen High School, but Sarah and Margaret couldn't have said it better. But what I did want to say was just how, you know, structurally and looking at the teachers with their goal setting conferences at the elementary level, like the partnership that they're developing with the parents around setting their goal and academical, social goal is just really impressive to see and how it empowers the the student to take ownership of their learning when they're setting that goal for their parents. And then again, like mentioned earlier with the PD this week is related focused around interventions and different levels of interventions and the continued care by this, by teachers and, and other, and other certificated and classified staff are one of the ways we can continuously improve to help our kids. And so that's been really very impressive to see. Appreciative of that work this week. Last week, we had a math leadership workshop here with, we're about, we had about twenty-five people here from our region. And then we also had about sixty or seventy people online and we were able to bring in some national speakers and experts in math and our math teachers were there to be a part of that. And that would really well doing that virtual in-person workshop, we're able to provide here on campus. And then I did also want to say the, the high school is working on taking students in for their dual enrollment classes for next spring, which is, which will be history of rock music, very popular, intro to global issues. So those are, students are interested in that. This is a great time to go sign up for those next spring. And then again, this week we had college roundup with wonderful, with a wonderful career speaker, Nicholas Wyman. We had over a hundred college institutions come here last night. It was pretty cold. But really, really well attended, lots of discussions around helping students find the best fit for them. And then tonight, probably going on, looks like already started, we have our, our college essay writing workshop with Dr. Jensen from Arizona State University's Writing Program. One of the top ones in the country. He's there working with parents and students over at the Artist Theater tonight. And the last thing I just wanted to share, last Friday, our third podcast went out around health matters and that's with Dr. Keller and Nurse Schultz. So I encourage everybody to listen to those around different health topics. The first three have all been around COVID-19 and the different impacts of that. But they'll be moving around through a range of topics as time goes on. So thank you.
Thank you so much. That concludes reports and we're moving on to item seven, public hearings. At six forty-seven, we open public hearings on the amendment to the 2021, 2022 negotiated amendment with California School Employees Association, CSEA, and it's Laguna Beach chapter number one thirty-one in accordance with AB 1200, chapter twelve thirteen, nineteen ninety-one, government code three five four seven point five and CCR title V, section one five four four nine. Clerk Osborne, have you received any speaker cards for those wishing to make public comment on the public hearing?
No.
Thank you, Clerk Osborne. With that, Mr. Collin, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President. So yes, as I stated, the staff proposes the Board of Education ratify the 2021, 2022 revisions to the agreement negotiated by the designated representatives of the California School Employees Association and it's Laguna Beach chapter one thirty-one and Laguna Beach Unified School District. And again, this revision includes a three point two five one-time off-schedule payment.
And since, sorry, since there's no public comment and with that, then we're going to close this hearing at sorry, six forty-eight. And that moves us on to item eight. Clerk Osborne, have you received any speaker cards for those wishing to make public comment on monthly financials? Skip the other one. Wait a minute. I'm sorry, I did a skip it. Sorry, thank you. I just realized. Sorry, this moves us to item seven B. At six forty-eight, we open public hearing. I am right, correct? Yeah, B. Okay. We're opening public hearing to the 2021, 2022 negotiated agreement with Laguna Beach Unified Calcati Association, LaBuca in accordance with AB 1200, chapter one, two, one, three, is one, 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 nine, nine, one, government code three, five, four, seven point five and CCR title five, section one, five, four, four, nine. Clerk Osborne, have you received any speaker cards for those wishing to make public comment on the public hearing?
No.
Okay, thank you. With that, Mr. Collin, floor is yours, Kim.
Thank you, President Normand. As I shared again, the staff is proposing that the Board of Education ratify the 2021, 2022 revisions to the agreement negotiated by the designated representatives of LaBuca and the Laguna Beach Unified School District. And again, this is for the one-time off-schedule payment of three point two five percent to all LaBuca members.
Thank you, Mr. Collin. At six forty-nine, we will close public hearing. This brings us to item seven C. At six fifty-nine, we'll open public hearing on amendment of the 2021, 2022 compensation proposal for non-represented classified and certificated employees in accordance with AB 1200, chapter one, two, one, three, one, nine, nine, one, government code three, five, four, seven point five and CCR title five, section one, five, four, four, nine. Clerk Osborne, have you received any comment cards on this one?
No.
Thank you. With that, Mr. Collin, the floor is yours.
Thank you again, President Normand. So again, the twenty-seven employees represented in this group are classified management, certified administrators, school psychologists and confidential employees. These employees are not members of either LaBuca or CSEA. The following proposal is recommended for approval by the Board of Education at a cost of one hundred and seventy-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars. And again, it's just the one-time three point two five percent one-time off-schedule payment as we discussed previously.
Thank you, Mr. Collin. At six fifty-one, we'll close public hearing and now we're moving to item eight. Sorry about that earlier. Clerk Osborne, have you received any speaker cards for those wishing to make a public comment on monthly financial updates?
No.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dixon, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Norman. And this is the monthly financial report for the month ending August 31st, 2021. So not a lot of financial data report, only the first two months of the fiscal year. However, one of the things that I would like to point out on this report in particular is on the second page, the, the special programs cost the COVID-19. You can see where we ended at last year with our total expenditures as far as the COVID relief dollars received and expended as well as the remainder that we're expending or we're expected to receive and budgeted to expend this year. And you'll see that in the monthly financial report reflected there. But if there's any questions on the report itself, I'm happy to take it. But again, as I said, there's only two months of data so far, but the biggest point I want to point out is the success we've had with getting the relief dollars in and putting them out to the benefit of our students.
Board members, students, are there any questions or comments?
I just wanted to ask on the Fund Forty, Forty-One, is that Aliso? Do I have the right? Forty, Forty-One, is that Aliso?
I'm sorry, do I, is it, are you questioning Fund Forty-One?
I'm just asking about the Aliso fund.
The Aliso fund is in Fund Forty.
Right.
Yes.
And, but in the sub-fund.
It is a sub-fund, correct.
Asking. We were tracking the amount that the amount would go down and then, but is it going up or down now? Does it look?
The amortization of the loan is going down. However, we have not touched the amount that we've set aside in the sub-fund of Fund Forty. So the amount that we have in Fund Forty actually exceeds the amortized loan amount to date and we do have that amount that we could draw from if we need to.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, with that, we're moving to item nine. Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Clerk Osborne, have you received any speaker cards for those wishing to make a public comment on first quarter report of the uniform complaints for the Williamson case settlement?
No.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Collin, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Normand. So yes, this is the first quarter report of uniform complaints for the Williams case settlement. And first quarter is July one to September thirtieth, 2021, and there are no complaints at this time.
Thank you for that. That moves us on, oh, board, board members, students, do you have any questions or comments for Mr. Collin? Okay, that moves us on to item ten. Clerk Osborne, have you received any speaker cards for those wishing to make a public comment on the approval of the 2021, twenty-two elementary and secondary school emergency relief plan?
No.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Mayberry and Mr. Dixon, the floor is yours.
Thank you. This is going to be a joint presentation with Dr. Mayberry and myself, similar to what we did with the Extended Learning Opportunities Grant. The Business Office and Instructional Service Office was been working very closely always, but especially in these times with these COVID relief dollars to make sure that we're putting them in the right place. So thank you, Chad and your team. It's been, it's been fun and we'll keep doing it for, for at least a few more years on. So the S R three, because it's through twenty-four, twenty-five, that's the grant. So S R three was brought onto us primarily by the American Rescue Plan Act that was passed back in March of, of this year. For us specifically in Laguna Beach, that gave us what was called S R three, which is the Elementary and Secondary Student Education Recovery Act. And this is the third round. There has already been S R rounds one and two. And like those rounds, the, the amount of money and how you spend that money is consistent and we'll talk about that in a later slide. For us, it's about one point seven million dollars total. And I mentioned a continuation of the first rounds of the S R funds. As far as the, what you, the allowable uses or expenditures for the program are, you can see them up there. I won't go through all of them, but you will see them identified in the report itself that's attached in the board item. A lot of that is built in there and you see that a lot of it ties into the work that we've already done and Dr. Mayberry is going to illustrate that later. But again, this is something that we've been building upon and not creating anything new because we've been able to enhance the programs that we have and that's the intention of these funds. Also, within these funds, it's important to note that there is a certain amount, specifically no less than twenty percent of these funds need to be spent for, to address what they call the impact of the lost instructional time and the allowable uses have been listed up here. I will like to point out for those who are looking at the printed version, that does not line up. This has changed since the version has been printed. That was a duplicate of the previous slide. So what you're looking at on the screen is up to date. What you have in the printed version is not accurate. So please disregard that. For Laguna Beach, this twenty percent of the S R three funds for us is about three hundred and forty thousand dollars. And again, it is identified and specified in the plan itself. And before I turn it over to Dr. Mayberry, another thing that you will see in the S R three expenditure plan itself is the call out of the hazards and the mitigation measures that we use to employ them. One of the components that's required with the approval of the S R three plan that we're bringing tonight is also have to a safe return in-person plan for students and staff, which we've had. It was previously looked at with our day in the life document that was posted last year, then updated this year. Mr. Collin has updated with our, our student staff expectation documents as well as our model COVID prevention plan, which has been updated and it continues to be updated at least every six months and it's available on the front page of our website, our district's website. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Mayberry.
Thank you. Yeah, so as Mr. Dixon said, you know, part of this, part of this fund has been using for a lot of COVID mitigating measures. The other part has been around our, our multi-tiered system of support and having that very targeted interventions for them. Some of that's staffing, some of that's extra teachers, looking at assessments. You see here on this, on this slide, the second part of that, so you know, our, our goal is to continue the work that we started really with that eighteen-month plan back last spring and that led into the Extended Learning Opportunity Grant. So that was summer intervention. So some of this we want to continue on into next summer. You'll see different things related to professional learning opportunities in this, in the plan for teachers. That includes looking at different ways to further support students. So if you've got, so you have this language up here, you'll see on the slide looks, will look similar, like this is very similar items that were on our Extended Learning Opportunity Grant, or ELO grant. One thing I did want to share today though is as part of that, I have underlined here is that summer program, we have some outcomes I can share with you related to that one, which, which was started with the ELO grant. So if you go to this next slide, this kind of shares you just how, how many students ended up going to it. So the P pre-kindergarten through eighth grade program, which included extended school years of students with I, some students with IEPs, targeted grade level intervention and English learner support. We had a little bit over a hundred and twenty students in that program. Then we had a high school credit recovery program which had fifty-six students in the first semester taking classes. The second semester, we had seventy students for our whole range, along with a dual enrollment program as well, which had thirty-six students in it. And then the newer program, the enrichment program lead, the last one, last bullet point there was new this year, we had a hundred and fifty students the first week and a hundred and eighty-six students the second week. So we're really excited on that new program and wanting to continue that into next summer, seeing that that's, you know, those are really good participation and engagement for our brand new program in the summer, in the middle of summer. So if you go to the next slide, these are some growth measures that we use for the targeted intervention program, the kindergarten through eighth grade program. Where we look at phonics skills, reading fluency, sight words, math skills, reading comprehension. We're also looking at attendance. And we start with pre, you know, a test we give them either when they come in or at the end of the school year and look at the growth at the end. You know, these are, the magnitude of these scores are not, you know, varying the kid and where they're coming from, right? And those students in that grade level or that were taking that assessment. But I did want to point out here is that the high attendance rate for summer school program was, was a four-week program. And then also just the, the level of detail that our staff goes to, to see that this program is working or not working or where we want to make adjustments. These are really good growth numbers to see over four weeks in the summer. We continue to follow and monitor these students as well as how we can prove it next year. And so if you go to that, the last kind of related slide to the summer program that I did want to share is just a perception and feedback from the kids there. And so I mean, we all know, you know, getting And so, I mean, we all know, you know, getting academic support in the summer is probably not every student's favorite thing to do in July or June or August, right? So if you look on the left-hand side, was a survey question related to parents and their students' attitude going into it. And the one at the bottom of that is, it was afterwards. And so the question was around their feelings toward it and how, whether they wanted to go or not, right? And you can see that big growth in that yellow area around students that were enjoying their time there in summer school, which is really credit to that staff of, that was there, and Ms. Schooler, who was the coordinator for that program. If you look at the second, the, on the right-hand side, that's the students' perception, and just the kids that really enjoyed coming, that's that long bar there. How many kids said they really enjoyed coming to summer school to learn up at our, up at top of the world this summer? So I wanted to share that as, thanks to your support and your approval of these funds and how they're spent, like this is, this is a good example of these programs and how it really targets the student support, but also supporting them on that social emotional wellness side, so that it's engaging and the experience is positive, because some students will want to come back next summer, and we'll want some new students to come back next summer. So it's really a very comprehensive program that we're seeing good results on so far. That's all I have to share. Thank you.
Thank you, that was wonderful. Students, board members, do you have any questions before we have a motion?
Just a quick question, Chad. On this data, the attendances, these are the students that are invited to come? Is that correct?
These are, the attendance rate is the ones that came. So there are some students who don't, who decide not to take our invitation.
But this program is not open to anybody to come. These are targeted students.
Correct, it's targeted invite-only.
I didn't phrase it right. So that's, okay.
Yeah. The LEAD program is the one that any student can come to for a two-week program.
Thank you.
Dr. Mayberry, on the same slide, the, the decimals represent the growth over the four weeks that they were in summer school? Is that?
That's correct.
So like, for example, in first grade, you saw 34% increase on sight words over the four-week period?
Yes.
Okay, that's fantastic. On the math skills, some of those kids doubled or more than doubled their amount of math fluency over the period of four weeks?
Yes, based on that, that assessment.
Yeah.
And, and again, like, I don't want to, we're excited about these results, but I don't want to overemphasize them in a way that, like, some kids are coming from a very, you know, really struggled last year, right? And so there was, there was more opportunity for growth there, and that's, that's what we're seeing in some of those grade levels. And so we're excited about them, but we're, this, this was, it's a good sign that some of that was working.
Yeah, that's fantastic. Well, I just, I wanted to point that out and give your, your team that ran summer school. I know it feels like a, in the rearview mirror now, but what a great start they got to the current academic year. And then I also wanted to point out on the student experience, there's been this maybe myth that students don't want to come to summer school or won't come to summer school. And I think as a board, we should really look at some of this data on how their experience of summer school actually panned out. It looks like they were really happy to be there. And I think students need to be busy, even if it's not something they expected or wanted to do at the outset. The fact that you guys can engage them and, and have a positive perception of their time there is really telling as we go forward with maybe future SIR funds.
No, thank you. Well, I mean, we're actually planning to use some of this, use some of this feedback when we go to introduce it to students next, next summer. As she, I look, this is the results of the experience that students and parents were seeing or feeling, their perceptions.
Chad, I, I was wondering, on the oral reading fluency for the fourth graders, they only went up 8% in oral reading fluency, going up 100% in math, but the 8% was the lowest of any cell. I was wondering if you had any insights to that?
You know, so it just depends on, obviously, it sort of depends on the student, right? So maybe the skills, the skills they're coming in with. I don't, you know, the breakdown of those students, but remember, this include, this includes English learners. Some, sometimes students with disabilities, a whole range. And so, so on the oral read influencer, it's like, that's the one that we, our team follows up with and looks at and say, okay, what's this? You know, was this, was there something that we need to change structurally? Or did that group actually have higher reading skills, so the growth wasn't as great as the math, right? And so, you know, the kindergarten math one's interesting as well, seeing that growth, because I will, we typically at the lower grades during the school year emphasis is around reading and intervention. You know, and math is what we've just added this year with the, with our new Math TOSA. But we've always been emphasizing math more at the upper levels. And so it is interesting to see, you know, the variability of the growth at different grade levels.
Thank you.
And Dee, I want to check with you to make sure you can hear, and if you have a question.
Oh, thanks, yeah, I can, I can hear, and I have a, I have a quick question.
Great, go ahead.
Well, I, I wondered if,
I can answer that. Member Perry, this is Jeff Dixon. Yes, the, specifically the SIR funds, one of the qualifying expenditures would be to support the response to the COVID-19 pandemic. The hybrid class would be one of those, but that's not in our plan. That would just be one of the potential allowable expenditures, but it's not something that we have in this plan for you right now. If that makes sense.
Okay, no, that, that makes sense.
Okay.
If we need to do that.
You, you couldn't, you wouldn't necessarily need the SIR 3 funds to do it either, though.
Okay, great, thank you.
Jeff, I had another related question on the SIR funding. Do we expect an SIR 4 or an SIR 5? Or do we feel like this is the end of the COVID relief dollars coming out of the federal government?
At this point, at least as far as the SIR funds go, it's been overwhelming just with the three. I think this is, this will be the end. However, there's no guarantee, because we're not at the end of the pandemic. Every day is a little different, so I wouldn't count it out, but for budget purposes, we are not counting on any additional relief funds at this point.
Thank you. Any more questions? Okay, what's that? Can I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Would anyone, students, is there any discussion we do have or board members before we take a vote? I'm just looking, okay. Could you please start us in a little call?
Isabella?
Oh, I'm sorry, before you do, I didn't ask, I didn't ask you. Dee, do you have, would you like to start any discussion or have any discussion? Or are you good with going forward with the vote?
I'm quick to go forward, thank you.
You're welcome, okay.
Yes. Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Normandin?
Yes, motion carries 5-0. We're now moving on to 11A. Clerk Osborne, have you received any speaker cards for those who wishing to make public comment on approval of the amendment of the 2021, 22 negotiated agreement with California School Employee Association? And it's Laguna Beach number 131, in accordance with AB 1200, Chapter 1213, 1991, Government Code 3547.5 and CCR Title 5, Section 15449.
No.
Okay, thank you so much. Mr. Cullen, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Normandin. Yes, as we discussed earlier in the public hearing, the staff recommends the Board of Education ratify the 2021, 2022 revisions to the 2021, 2024 Collective Bargaining Agreement negotiated by the Designated Representatives of the California School Employees Association, and it's Laguna Beach Chapter 131, and Laguna Beach Unified School District. And again, this, these revisions are the, the one-time funds of 3.25%.
Thank you, Mr. Cullen. Are there any questions before we have a motion?
I just have a question. Mr. Cullen, you've used the term in the public hearings, ratify. Doing, and our agenda states approval. Do we need to adjust that, or? Is it a ratification or an approval?
I think, well, in the recommended action, it states motion to approve. So I think we're fine. It's just, I did, in the background, I used the word ratified, you're correct.
And Dee, do you have a question before we go to a motion?
No, Stacy.
Thank you, okay. And can I please have a motion in a second?
I move approval.
Second.
Thank you.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member, member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Normandin?
Yes, so motion carries 5-0. That moves us to 11B. Clerk Osborne, have you received speaker cards for those wishing to make public comment on the approval amendment to 2021, 2022 negotiated agreement with Lufa in accordance with AB 1200, Government Code 3547.5, CCR Title 5, Section 15449?
No.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Cullen, floor shares again.
And yes, thank you. And yes, the staff recommends the Board of Education approve the 2021, 2022 revisions to the agreement negotiated by the Designated Representatives of the Laguna Beach Unified Faculty Association and Laguna Beach Unified School District. And again, this is for the 3.25% off schedule.
Thank you, are there any questions? Dee, do you have a question?
No.
Okay, I think we move to.
Move approval?
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Normandin?
Yes, motion carries 5-0, moves us to 11C. Clerk Osborne, have you received any speaker cards for those wishing to make a public comment on the approval of the 2021, 2022 Compensation Proposal with Non-Representative Classified or Certified Employees in accordance with AB 1200, Government Code 3547.5 and CCR Title 5, Section 15449?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Cullen, floor shares one more time.
Thank you, President Normandin. And I guess, yes, the staff recommends the Board of Education approve the revised 2021, 2022 Compensation Proposal for all non-represented classified and certified employees. And again, these are those that are not covered by Lufa or CSEA in the 3.25% off schedule.
Thank you, Mr. Cullen. Any questions? Nope, okay, can I get a motion in a second?
Move approval?
Second.
Thank you.
Member Vickers? Whoops.
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Normandin?
Yes, motion carries 5-0. Next, we're, before we go into action items, I'd like to just take a quick restroom break for five minutes. It is 7:14. If, actually, we can do four minutes, because there's one back there. If we can, I'll be back at 7:20, that'd be great. Thank you, everyone, we're going to re-adjourn. It is 7:25. Clerk Osborne, have you received any speaker cards for those wishing to make public comment on the approval of the MOU for understanding between Laguna Arts Museum and LBSD for elementary art education for the 2021, 22 school year?
None received.
Thank you so much. Dr. Mayberry, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Now, this, this MOU is with the Laguna Beach Art Museum to provide a series of elementary art lessons across multiple grade levels for this school year. We've had this partnership for a couple of years now, and it's obviously evolved a little bit with the school closure and all the different models we've had in the last 18 months. But this, the Laguna Art Museum workshops, along with the Arts Masters Legacy Program, are part of the more comprehensive elementary visual arts program. That includes several other lessons and activities and events coordinated by our district Art TOSA, as well as the elementary VAPA coordinators. And so each of the sessions that they provide is a presentation on different exhibits or artworks, introduction to art-making activity, time to create art, time for reflection. It aligns with the California State Art Standards for Visual Performing Arts. And they also lose, lessons include connections to California history, as well as often the individual artists. And so bring this forward for your view and approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions before we move for a motion?
Dr. Mayberry, when is it supposed to begin?
It's supposed to begin this fall, and so we're expecting, once this, once this is approved, that will be, this will start happening here, hopefully before Thanksgiving.
And this is in addition to all the other programs we have around art? In addition? In addition?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And Member Perry, do you have a question before we move to motion? Okay, thank you. Okay, can I have a motion in a second, please?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Or comments?
I just have a comment that I was appreciative of reading in the description that the students will be encouraged to push their ideas beyond project examples to make original works. Because I think that's, that's really important, to give children that, the encouragement to have that freedom. Thank you.
Go ahead, Dee.
I, I agree with Board Member Vickers. I love that we're partnering with Lamb and that this part, so we can be really creative with.
Art masters.
But that is getting way much more scripted. So it's wonderful to have those.
Thank you, Dee, and I'm just going to repeat that so that whoever's listening online could hear, because there's feedback if you, when you say, if I put the mic on you. So Member Perry was saying that she agrees with and is excited to see this, the partnership with Lamb, and that it, she agrees with Member Vickers, that it's beyond just art masters. So, okay, any other comments or discussions before we take a vote?
I just want to recognize, I think this is really cool that we're working with something locally and giving a new opportunity to express, like, really creative ideas and art.
Dr. Mayberry, do you know if field trips to Laguna Art Museum are contemplated as part of this? Because I thought, I recall, they were in the original pilot phase. I don't know that they are in this new contract, because I didn't see any mention of actually going to the art museum.
Yeah, I think, I think that's our goal, is to go out and do more of those field trips. I think with, obviously, with all the different health, you know, you know, measures and things that are in place now, we're just cautious to put that into anything. But our goal is to get back out there to, to go visit different museums and the different places, including that place, yes.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and I'm sure it's a balance of time on the bus and, and the, looking at the exhibits against creative art development. Those two are kind of different. Observing exhibits of art are different than the creative art that I think Member Vickers is referring to. So thank you, though, very nice program.
Museum, which was, after the high school students were able to walk there. And then they also did something creative to go along with the exhibition.
Thank you.
Member Perry, can you say that one more time? I didn't take notes, and I want to repeat it so people listening online can hear it.
Oh, sorry. The museum part of this, which is not available right now because of all the COVID precautions, but when the students come to the museum, they tour the museum, but they also have a creative art lesson there. So they've had both parts. And the timing, the time wasn't that much. I mean, the high school students walked there. And I know the high school students, next, I don't know, next week or coming up, are doing an online, an online view of the museum.
Okay, for the listeners online, Dee, I'm going to repeat that. Can you turn that down a little so I don't get feedback? So the museum part isn't happening right now because of COVID restrictions, but when those are lifted, they'll be able to tour. But when those are lifted, they'll be able to tour the museum and have their lesson.
But Carol, it also, they're even starting out virtually, according to their write-up.
I'm just repeating what you're saying.
No, I know, but in here.
Yeah. Yes, that they can do it virtually right now. Yes. Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. Or comments? Victoria, can you please conduct a, starting with the student?
Isabella?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Perry? Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Normandin?
Yes, so the motion carries five zero, and this moves us on to twelve B. Clerk Osborne, have you received any speaker cards for those wishing to make public comment on the approval of Learning Together Professional Services for students and staff in the amount of six thousand two hundred ninety-five dollars?
No.
Thank you, Clerk Osborne. Dr. Mayberry, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Yeah, we're excited to have this opportunity to work with this, with Learning Together again this year. We've worked with Dr. Kyle Jensen and Mike Morel previously around strengths and Gallup, as well as college essay writing. So this is, this is a set of events for students, parents, and staff, all of them. And so that included the college essay workshop tonight. We met with both of them, the administrator and school leaders, met with them this afternoon to do some, some professional learning with them. Tomorrow, they'll be meeting, doing some workshops with creative writing classes. Dr. Jensen's also going to meet with some English Language Arts and Writing teachers to kind of refine the assignments to better prepare for students for college-level writing courses. And then we'll, again, be following up with them later on to do more kind of planning on how to implement the strengths-based learning throughout our schools. So it's a really good partnership that we've developed with them the last year or two that we're really grateful to have the opportunity to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mayberry. Are there any questions before we move to a motion?
Just a question for Victoria. Since some of these activities took place yesterday and Sunday, do we need to do a ratification and approval?
They didn't take place yesterday. They started today.
Okay.
And then will continue tomorrow at the school site and at the district office. We'll have three sessions at the district. That's okay.
I was thinking the day was the fifteenth.
Okay, can I have a motion and a second, then?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. And is there any discussion or comments? Dee? Can't see you. Okay, thank you. Okay. Victoria, can you please conduct a board member roll call, starting with the student?
Isabella?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Perry? Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Normandin?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. And with that, we're going to move on to the consent item, consent calendar on thirteen A. Clerk Osborne, have you received any speaker cards for those wishing to make a public comment on consent calendar item C through X?
No.
Thank you. Hang on a second, let me get my place. Are there any comments or questions on any of these items? Not pulling them, but comments or questions on any of the consent items? Okay. Does anyone wish to pull a consent item? For a separate vote? Okay. Victoria, can you please conduct? Oh, that's right, sorry. Can I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Jan and then Jan.
Isabella?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Perry? Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Normandin?
Yes. Motion carries five zero, and we're moving to item fourteen A. This statement is being read based on the requirements of government code section five four, nine, five, three, C three. The agenda item proposals to approve of amendments to contracts of employment with the district, three assistant superintendents and the contract of employment with the superintendent. The amendments are included on the posted agenda and copies are available on request. The amendments provide for a three point two five percent off-schedule salary increase for the four employees of the current school year applied based on the consistent, based on and consistent with the three point two five percent off-schedule salary increase approved earlier in the meeting for all other employees of the district. Clerk Osborne, have you received any speaker cards on this item?
No.
Let me check, I have to read this part. Okay. Sorry, Clerk Osborne, I need to say it again. I need to read the whole thing. Have you received any speaker cards for those wishing to make a public comment on approval of the amended employment contracts for the superintendent schools, assistant superintendent, human resources, assistant superintendent instructional services, and assistant superintendent business services? Approval of amended employment contracts for superintendent schools, assistant superintendent, human resources, assistant superintendent instructional services, and assistant superintendent business services? Approval of amendment of employment contracts for superintendent schools, assistant superintendent, human resources, assistant superintendent structural service, and assistant superintendent business services?
No.
Thank you. So does anyone have, because this is really us, so does anyone have any questions or comments? Okay, could I get a motion, then?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Could you do a roll call, please, of just the board members?
One second.
Sorry, we're waiting to reconnect. Member Perry? We're glad you're back. There's been a motion and a second on the floor for item fourteen A. I'm not sure where I lost you, where we lost you. Okay, awesome. Okay.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Perry? Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Normandin?
Yes, so the motion carries five zero. And this moves us on to fourteen B. Oh, you don't, I need to switch my thing, sorry. Clerk Osborne, have you received any speaker cards for those wishing to make public comment regarding the first read of board policies in the four thousand series?
No.
Thank you, Clerk Osborne. Board members, including students, do you have any questions before we have a motion? Or discussion and comments? Anyone have any questions? Okay, could I get a motion in a second, then?
So moved.
Second. Oh, Dee. Oh, wait. Oh. There's board policies. Didn't just start with the wrong thing? Where?
You had discussed doing two motions.
I did.
One to waive the second read of retirement.
Oh, I thought that was here. No, that's just the whole thing. Okay. So where's the wave? Oh. Sorry, board members. Can I have a motion and a second to waive the second reading on the policies listed for retirement and approval and approve them for retirement?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? These are just the ones we're retiring. Go ahead.
Isabella?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Perry? Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Normandin?
Yes, so the motion carries five zero. I'm trying to remember, is this the one? Here, right? Okay. So board members, can I have a motion and a second to move the policies listed for a second reading and approval at the November eighteenth, twenty twenty one board meeting? So moved?
Second.
Are there any comments or questions? Dee, do you have a comment or question before we vote?
No, I didn't.
Okay. Jim, your mic's still on, so I don't know. Since your mic's on, I don't know if you have, okay. That's why I'm staring at you. Okay. It's good. Victoria, can you please conduct a board member roll call vote? Thank you.
Isabella?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Perry? Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Normandin?
Yes, so the motion carries five zero. And this brings us to fifteen, governance reporting. This is a section where board members are going to provide reports to their fellow board members on activities they did related to their position. And we'll start, why don't we just start going across? We'll start with Kelly.
Thank you, President Normandin. For my board report, I first off wanted to thank Instructional Services and our site leadership for developing and communicating some really nice learning plans for when students are in quarantine or in isolation. I really appreciated that and thought they were both very strong and clear. So thank you for doing that. I also attended the college roundup last night at the high school. That was a really nice event, hundreds of college tables and a nice energy. I attended Top of the World's Back-to-School Bonanza, likewise for that, and the music was great. I attended the Challenge Success Workshop on September twenty eighth. And just, I'm always impressed with the quality of their research and their delivery. It was a really interactive workshop. And I liked that it was customized and personalized to Laguna Beach families. I know that there's another one coming up for partner schools, so I'm curious how those compare. I also met with our CSBA rep from Orange County, Justin Massey, a great resource for us as board members. I met with Instructional Services prior to the last board meeting to understand last year's academic outcome data and really dive into that deeper than we can in, in the boardroom. I, lastly, reviewed a lot of the bills that were recently signed by the governor following the legislative deadline of October tenth. Thank you very much.
Attended the PTA Council meeting, and there was a long and thorough update to them by Dr. Valoria on all the COVID protocols and the vaccine and the, all the, all the information that comes in. And I think it was really appreciated by the PTA presidents that were there. Those folks are really pleased that they're back into, into meetings, even though they're not in the meetings as they have been, but they're still, and they're very involved in fundraising and their membership drives. There was, I think there's just a lot of appreciation that they are meeting in person as, as the PTA Council. The Equity Committee, Steering Committee met again on a virtual meeting, and they're getting ready to take the next step of going out to all the stakeholder groups and really gathering the information on those issues that marginalize any of our students and then how we address those issues. I went to, listened to a webinar that was Women in Leadership, and it was dealing with school districts and how they've been dealing with any kind of adversity through all these challenges over the last year and a half. And some districts are not getting the kind of community support that we have had here from our parent community and our greater community, even though we have some that we've, like we heard tonight, that the vast majority of our parents are right in there, supporting us in keeping their children back in school and getting them back to education as we know that we want and need to deliver it. There was a speaker that was one of the board members from Tustin that was referenced tonight, who is basically a brand-new board member, but it was very interesting to also, they called on a couple of board members that had been board members way longer than I have been. And so they were addressing some of the issues and the fact that even though this is very dynamic right now, it certainly has gone on before, whenever there's some kind of a controversial issue. And you just, the advice really coming from them was that you just work through it. You just keep in contact with your constituents and you just make the best decisions you can with all the information and research that you have. So that was interesting. Then I just wanted to share, well, one is my opinion, which is, from being in this district for a long time, that when that latest publication came out that addresses all the superintendents in the county, that three of them, I mean, Dr. Valoria's here, but they're from our district. They worked here and they, we got the benefit of their expertise, and now they are superintendents in other districts in, in Orange County. Beyond that, I know that we have a superintendent in Medondo that also came from our district. And I, and I think that that just shows a kind of collaboration and a kind of growth that we try to provide for all of our adult leaders, in addition to our students. The last thing is, I attended a memorial service for John Cunningham, who got a lot of write-up for starting what was Friends of the Sea Lion when he started it, but he was a science teacher at the high school during a period of time when we had a number of teachers in the district who also were in the lifeguard force during the summer, because that was more or less a summer job. And so he taught a marine science class. He taught also a survival class, something I'm sure we couldn't do now because of liability issues. They rappelled down the cliffs at Crescent Bay. I mean, it was, but what was, what I really want to share about this, he was eighty-three, and they had it down at the beach, is there were a lot of former students there. And so then you're talking, you know, maybe people that have kids of their own that are in school now, there were a lot of parents of students that were there. And a couple of the tributes to him revolved around the fact of, as a teacher, he changed the direction of their life. One of those speakers was Mark Christie, who now has a ranch but has hobbies and has been, his own child went through school here. He's been very involved in this community. He grew up here. He went to high school here. And so I just think that I've, I, I certainly know it, believe it, and feel it, that teachers and instructional aides and anyone that work with our youth have that potential to have a profound effect. And so it's such a great responsibility to make sure that you do that for those students. But to hear that, to hear these people speak about what a difference it made to have that person as their teacher, just, I wanted to just share that, because I think that's about, that's what it is about what we do and how, how dynamically you can affect a young person. I know that was a long report, but thank you.
I just wanted to follow up on Mrs. Osborne's comments about the, all the bills. I tried to read them and tried to understand them. I'm still confused as far as how it will affect us, but hopefully someone will, I'm sure the superintendent will sort it out for me. And following up on Jan and the importance of our teachers and the role that they play in marine science, particularly here in Laguna Beach. It's just been a catastrophic time for us with the oil leaks. As someone who spends at least two hours a day on the beach, that has just been, just a travesty as far as what, what has gone on. So I've been working, I, I read, and I get so many different correspondence from the parents and from the different schools, but someone was doing a fundraiser as far as to clean it, to clean up the oil spills on our beaches. And no one will own up what school did it, is, is, is doing this from the people who were here tonight. So in the meantime, I've gotten between one hundred and two hundred t-shirts and sweatshirts donated from the American Fishing Tackle and Clothing Company, which the chairman of that lives in Laguna Beach. He's also the chair of the Coastal Conservation Association of California. And I think these are really, they, they were, they were delivered after I left. So they're in gigantic boxes right inside my house, so I haven't been able to open them to see, because I'm here, to see how many were really there, but it's between one hundred and two hundred. So I'm going to turn them over to the student board members to, to find out who's, who's doing the fundraisers, or if you can organize the fundraisers so that you can make money, because I think these are really high-quality pieces of clothing. Thank you.
So I couldn't, number Kelly, the, it wasn't a school-sponsored fundraiser, but there were students that were affiliated with, at least Top of the World, who had the fundraiser to raise funds for the, for the, the oil spill.
Because the principal denied it.
Yes, because it was not, it was not a school-sponsored event.
I think she said something similar to that, but it wasn't to, to the fundraisers. But I, I do read all this stuff that comes my way. I'm just so old that I can't comprehend all of it.
That's so not true. Dee, you want to go ahead and give your report? Let me try to turn. Okay, can you give it to us on the next meeting? Is that okay? Okay, that'd be great, because I like your reports. We all do. Okay. I'm, ditto to Osborne, Clerk Osborne. Member Kelly, in reading all the- Remember Kelly, and reading all the legal jargon, right, and knowing that CSBA is going to bring us their summary, as well as Dr. Valoria goes through those too. And they'll help clarify some of the things that I put notes on in trying to understand as well. And then, you know, I can't agree enough with Member Vickers and what she said and how, you know, teachers make such an impact on students, and they talk about them years later, right? It's one of the most beautiful things to hear. We appreciate that. And in lieu of, I have to get to the airport and pick up one of my sons who talks all the time about someone all, at this place, still all these years later. And Margaret, that's you I'm staring at. That you guys do, you guys, you guys make such a big impact on, on the students. With that, since Dr. Valoria's not here, the next, we're going to move on to 16. The next regular scheduled business meeting will be held in person at Thurston Middle School in the library on November 18th, 2021. I move to adjourn the meeting. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, Member Vickers. As a reminder, BB 9200, when we adjourn, the board is no longer seated, and thus we have no individual authority until we're seated again. All in a favor? Ah, motion carries, Fraser. The meeting is adjourned at 7:52. Thanks, everyone.